First on the agenda, I would ask if anyone has a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have recognition.
First up, we've got the drawing cards that our students have submitted to the Kingsport Times News and were published. And those students from Jonesville Middle School are Stephanie Collins, Sean Paul Coke, Justin Lawson, Keaton McDonald, Sierra Parks, Zulium Rayes, Katie Shute, and Jasmine Smith. So congratulations to those students. Next up, we've got the schools with the highest percentage of attendance. And for the month, well, for the year, we're going to go ahead and recognize the year the school had the highest percentage of attendance for the year. And for second place was Elkhorn at 94.287% attendance. And Jonesville had a very close first and second, but Jonesville had the highest attendance for the year at 94.363.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment? Next, we'll move to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I was going to make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the June 6, 2016 Special College School Board Meeting, the minutes from the June 9 Regular School Board Meeting, claims and expenditures, the Head Start Home Base Staff Handbook, the Head Start Home Base Parent Handbook, the Head Start Home Center Staff Handbook, Head Start Home Center Parent Handbook, and Virginia School Boards Association Policy Updates with the following updates: Conflict of Interest and Disclosure of Economic Interests, Closed Meetings, Public Participation at School Board Meetings, Small Purchasing, Threat Assessment Teams, Personnel Records, Deletion of the Procedure for Adjusting Grievances for Support Staff, Deletion of Local Licenses for Teachers, Professional Staff Progressionary Term and Continuing Contract, Suspension of Staff Members, Support Staff Employment Status, Support Staff Progressionary Period, Instructional Goals and Objectives, Family Life Education, Character Education, Homebound Correspondence and Alternate Means of Instruction Acceleration, Standards of Learning Test and Graduation Requirements, Locally Awarded Verified Credits, Student-Athlete Concussions During Extracurricular Activities, Student Records, Requests for Information, Charter Schools, and Relations with Educational Accreditation Agencies.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Next, we have reports to the board. Does anyone have anything they want to report?
I have two things. First off, you know, I am the representative on the governor's school. We have chosen a new director and his name is Dr. Mike Robinson, who I don't know whether is/was now the superintendent of Smith County Schools, and he will be going on a full-time basis. And secondly, since we're only about a month away from school starting, the educators might want to prepare for the new school year to make sure they keep their receipts because the 250 above the line educator tax deduction is now permanent. And it can also be used for professional development and will be periodically adjusted to keep pace with inflation.
Anyone else? Okay, next we'll move to reports to the Division Superintendent Stravsky.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first of all, I want to point out a couple of key dates. Ms. Jesse mentioned the school starts in a little over a month, which is hard to believe, but August 18th is our start back to school. We have two division in-service days, one scheduled for elementary on August 15th and the other for secondary on August 16th. We'll be providing more details to staff as that gets closer. But these days are being designed to support the initiative of providing a Chromebook to each of our teachers to move forward with how we're teaching for the 21st century. Again, the intent is to really change how we handle instruction. Next up, in your packet, you have a recapitulation sheet, a recap of how we closed out FY '16 at the last board meeting. You authorized me and administration to balance between categories, to balance the budget for FY '16 expenditures. In the reports, you'll see the breakdown of each one of the categories. We will be sharing this information in more detail with the Board of Supervisors this coming Tuesday. The reason we don't have a lot of detail right now is we're waiting on final determination back and forth between county administrations, specifically the Treasurer's Office, on finalizing some numbers about what's going to happen as far as capital reserve, transfers, that kind of stuff. But as you see here, we were able to underspend our budget last year by approximately $2.7 million. So some of that is accounted for in textbook funds, some of that is accounted for in school nutrition. As you can see, we had a very good year budget to expenditures on school nutrition. So that being said, any questions on budget for FY '16? If not, next enrollment update. As of the end of June, our enrollment was 3,049.5. So that is actually down from what we had in May, and it's down from what we had last June, from 3,097 last June till this year, 3,049.5. So declining enrollment, not dramatic, but declining enrollment, something we will continue to monitor as we go into the start of the school year with enrollment, budget projections and that kind of information. Along the line of enrollment updates, I'm sure you're aware that the governor announced a reduction in revenues projections for the state. We are holding firm with what we already have as a budget that's approved, contracts issued for FY '17, but more information will be coming from the governor's office as he is doing a presentation to the General Assembly on August 26th. So as more information becomes available, we'll be sharing that with you and also the public. At this point, we don't expect a dramatic impact on the current approved budget for this year. Next up, direct deposit update. We are still in the process of finalizing this process. Our first direct deposit for everyone that is a 12-month contract will be August 1st. We were still issuing checks on July 1st. A lot of that has to do with transition, working with the Treasurer's Office, to make sure that we're being smooth in that transition. 12 months' staff will get their first direct deposit on August 1st, 11-month will get it on September 1st, and everybody will be direct deposit as of October 1st. So standing.
The question I have is, is my bank included? My bank's not in Lee County. It's going to be any bank, doesn't matter.
Yes, sir. Policy up until we changed it with board's permission a couple of months ago was that it had to be a Lee County Bank at this point. It's any bank that accepts direct deposit. Any other questions? Summer work schedule, just letting you know, we are going to be on four 10-hour days, Monday through Thursday, through July 29th. That's for all of our buildings, including schools. That will end on July 29th, and we will be back on five 8-hour days as of August 1st. This has been a, I won't say a mixed bag. We've had about 80% of staff vote for four 10s. We will poll them again as we go into next spring to find out if that was something that we want to continue or something that we haven't. I've found it to be productive from the people that I've seen, but it's been nice to be able to shut down our buildings. And when I say shut down, doesn't mean we turn off heat pumps, that kind of stuff. It just means that we set back temperatures so that we don't have to cool those buildings as if they were occupied. So going to really look at the electrical savings on that, but again, comes down to how much did we get done this summer? Next thing, Masonic Dictionary Project. We have authorized the Masonic Group to provide third-grade dictionaries again. We have had very positive feedback from our elementary schools. They provide these to our third graders. Principals have indicated that this is a tremendous resource, good service to the community, and it's something that they will be presenting to students in the fall, September, October, and frankly, just wanted to give you an update on that. We've authorized that. Facility review, we are continuing to work through getting an update on where we are with facilities, what it will cost to get our buildings up to the 21st century standards. Had a meeting scheduled Tuesday with Department of Mines and Energy. We've rescheduled that meeting for later this month in anticipation of being able to do some work in the coming months to get an idea of what budget impact it will be to update our facilities. Any questions on those items? Last one, staffing and hiring. If you have been reading the paper, you've noticed that we've been doing business a bit differently since about May. We have been advertising positions much more. If you talk to Ms. Bergen, my assistant, she will be glad to attest to the fact that we have been swamped with applications, which is a good thing. It's presented a lot of opportunities, so we've advertised wider than we have. We've made information available even on our website more than we have in the past. We have gone through processes where we look at the number of applicants, we find the most qualified applicants, and then we conduct interviews. Our principals are involved, our Director of Human Resources, Vicki Brown, has been involved as she can, as she's transitioned roles. We've involved a lot of administrative staff in trying to find the best fit for our schools, and I want to say our departments here in Lee County. So that has been a good thing, in my opinion. We have found some tremendous people, both inside talent and some people who are interested in coming to Lee County, not only to serve Lee County Public Schools, but also move to the community. So it's been a good thing. Any questions?
I'd like to say I've been just real proud of the way the hiring's been done. I know in the past, I've heard a lot of principals mention, well, we got a phone call, we're getting new teacher, and I had nothing to do with it, didn't even know they was coming. And for a board member to appoint somebody in the school, I don't think's the right way to do business in the school system. I'm not an educator, she's not educator, I mean, with respect to Debbie, none of us has the authority to do so. Obviously, you know, if you've got strong feelings, somebody's going to do a good job, you're going to say that.
I don't either.
With your teaching experience, I'll say that. But anyways, we want our principals to be principals, we want to allow them to do interviews. I appreciate that since January, and I'm glad to see it happen.
My end. Next, we move on to action discussion items. Do we have a motion to authorize or for authorization to apply for an application for the Head Start Grant Number 03CH3460 slash 03 for FY 2007?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy EBCB Safety Drills?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy GBMA Support Staff Grievances?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy GC Professional Staff?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy IHB Class Size?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy IA, a notification of learning objectives?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy IKFD Alternative Pass to Attaining Standard Units of Credit?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like Mr. Austin to discuss it just a little bit on this.
One of the things on these policies, as you understood it, you saw on consent agenda, there's a lot of policy updates that are just changing a word, changing a punctuation, something that's minor grammatical that come as part of their subscription to the Virginia School Board Policy Associate, Policy Services. So we look at different ones, we pull out certain ones that are to really emphasize them to you administratively. This is one specifically that has a big impact on how we conduct business day-to-day. With this policy, it would exempt our schools from having to do 140 clock hours. It does away with seat time and actually identifies some information that students can demonstrate their competency, their understanding in different ways besides having to sit in a class for 180 days and take an SOL test. They can demonstrate the understanding in a different way and then turn around and take an assessment and be able to get a verified credit, well, get a credit and possibly even a verified credit at different times throughout the year instead of us just always testing in May. So this is moving us more towards what the State Board of Education is presenting with a profile of graduate.
Does that pertain to all classes?
Yes, but credits, of course, are more related to high school, but it'll be grades eight through 12, and it's all classes, yes.
But I'm saying...
CTE, core classes, yes, ma'am. Fine Arts.
But I mean, what about SOL? So in other words, I could be in biology class for two weeks, take the test, and...
We're going to put some parameters on that, but that would be a possibility, but that's not something administratively we would allow, unless it was recovery.
What about, um, would that, if a student fell into this, would their diploma be a different type of...
No, don't make... The credits are awarded the same as if you sent a class. For example, I'll take welding as an example. If I went in and took a welding class, I wanted to take welding one, but I could prove to my teacher that I already understood everything that it took to take welding one, and I spent three weeks, four weeks, whatever, it could prove competence to that instructor, you could get credit for welding one and move on to welding two. So it helps us recognize students' understanding instead of making them sit through a class that maybe they already understand.
And that will be mine.
Yes, ma'am, very much so. This sets the stage for us to be able to develop some administrative, and I'm going to say even another board regulation to set some parameters on this, but yes, basically, the language in this weighs 140 hours that's required to earn a credit at this point. And again, this is something that I anticipate coming from the Board of Education.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy JRCA, School Service Providers' Use of Student Personal Information?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy KBA-R Request for Information?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy KBA-F1 Request for Public Records?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy DGD-VR Management of Funds for Instructional And office supplies?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, administration is recommending at this point that we decentralize some of our purchasing. Up to this point, if schools have wanted to purchase instructional materials or supplies, they've sent a purchase order to the central office, and then it has been processed here. We send it back to the schools, and then they may place their order. What we are proposing in this policy and also requires a resolution by the Board of Supervisors, which we've made that request pending your approval, is to actually send the money to the schools, develop some procedures administratively to be able to hold them accountable in how they spend the money, but delegate that so that they can get instructional materials and supplies much quicker. They can make place the order, and they may spend a portion of school board money on those materials. So we will define that in a superintendent's regulation to make that clear and also hold them accountable on the audit that they receive annually.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve School Board Policy GCBD-VR Staff Attendance?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to table that one and the next one, GCBD-VR1, until the next meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to know about that, too. That's the incentive program, correct?
Correct. The administration's recommending first review of this.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor of tabling School Board Policy GCBD-VR and GCBD-VR1, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Brian Dean, who's designated to attend meetings of the school board in the absence of the Division Superintendent?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Brian Dean, who's designated to sign documents in the absence of the Division Superintendent?
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Brian Austin as agent and Denise Lambert as deputy agent to examine and approve claims and authorize the payment thereof?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint Brian Dean as Freedom and Information Act for you, officer? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion for appointment of the 2016-2017 School Board Budget Subcommittee?
I'll make a motion.
Who do you want to appoint? You have to recommend someone.
Debbie, do we need more than one?
Debbie and Mike Kidwell.
Okay, we have a second. I'll second it. Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion for appointment of a delegate and alternate delegate for 2016 VSBA annual conviction? I'll make a motion, and Debbie, are you planning on attending that?
I'm planning on attending.
I'll make, then I'll make a motion that Debbie be appointed as the delegate and for you. I'll make a motion that, and also that motion will include Mike Kidwell as the alternative delegate. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to authorize the Division Superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between July 15, 2016 through August 11, 2016?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve disposal of surplus property per School Board Policy DE and Disposal of Surplus Items?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second with, yes, you need to...
With approval? Or just from supervision?
Break just a little bit on what it is and where it came from.
Do we have a...
The second is.
Okay. Let's go to...
Administration is recommending that we dispose of various sundry items, and we're going to start with three items at the bus garage, which are three buses, 1998, 2019, 93 buses. They, as you can see in your packet, they have considerable knowledge on these vehicles that our staff have recommended getting rid of. And what we're planning on doing, the reason why we're asking for three items to comply with School Board Policy DE, anything over $500, we need your permission to dispose of. So we may be able to sell these for more than $500, so this is getting your permission to do so. With that being said, we're also looking at doing just three items initially. We've got a lot more, but we're going to try a program called GovDeals. It's an online auction website that a lot of school divisions have had success with. We will be making a link to our website pending your approval to be able to advertise these items, get them out there, and we will close bids and work through this process. If it works well with these three items, we may be coming to you with a lot more. Otherwise, we will be looking to do some kind of public auction in the near future.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to fund a portion of a school resource officer grant for Pennington Middle School?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How much would that amount be?
It's $400 a month, I believe.
$4,800 for the year.
I mean, it's a...
It's a good deal.
It's a good deal.
Administratively, it's something that we recommend for the security of our schools. Not that we've had issues, but having an SRO in a building's a good thing for a variety of reasons. It's a good communication tool between the police and our staff. It is a tremendous thing, and it's a good investment, in my opinion. Administration recommends it.
That fondness between the school system and the town of Pennington, great.
Yes, sir, and we are going to be working with the Sheriff's Office to have an SRO at least partially funded at Jonesville Middle. We're trying to be equitable in all of our secondary schools. This is a start.
Any other discussion?
What about an agreement on the SRO with the Sheriff's Department?
We have an MOU that's currently in force, and we're in the process of updating that. Of course, we'll need to do the same thing with the...
All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to authorize the creation of the position of lead teacher and a payment of $500 annually per person?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Do we have any discussion?
Administration recommends creating a position called lead teacher. The intent here is for schools that do not have assistant principals, and this principal is out of the building, that we would have a teacher that we would get a substitute for that would serve in that administrative capacity. Pending board approval, we will have our principals find a person, preferably that is certified in administration, to help build our administrative talent pool so that we have some individuals who are experienced, who are still teachers, to find out, first of all, if that's a career that they would be interested in in the long term, and if it's something that would be a good fit for us as well. So the administration recommends approval.
Is the stipulation going to be with the admin or...
It's a preference, not a mandate, but it's going to be a principal's, principal recommendation.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to authorize the creation of the position of technology contact and payment of $400 annually per person?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Much like what we were doing with lead teacher, we're trying to improve communications with our schools, and this would give us a person in the building that does service to purposes. First of all, serves as a point of contact for a technology staff, but then also would be responsible for maintaining the website. We are working to communicate more clearly, more consistently with the community, making information available, putting out the information more consistently, and this is a step in the right direction, and that's why administration recommends approval.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion for acquisition of Board Docs, a web-based system for school board meetings and policy management?
Is this something...
I'll speak to it if you want me to.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Discussion?
Board Docs is a doc, is a document database where our board packet that you're currently looking at is something that could be online. We would purchase a Chromebook for each school board member, it would be something that you would have at home, we have something that would be much more available to the community, we could put the agenda out, all of the different attachments that are included in your packet would be made available to the public. Those that are not exempt from closed session personnel, that type of stuff, would still be available to you, but would not be available to the public because of exemptions that we have to fill you. Board Docs, as you can see, we have a list of current subscribers in the Commonwealth. There are approximately half the school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia are currently using Board Docs. It's a tremendous product, and one of the reasons we would like to look at it and are making this recommendation is it will make us much more transparent with how we communicate with the public, making information available and a much more readily available resource, as well as we're gonna move towards putting our policy manual on this website. Much easier to maintain, much better communication, so administration recommends purchasing Board Docs LT, which is the light version, it's a $2,700 investment. It is not something that, the initial version, if we decide we want to use it more in a different capacity, there's another version that would cost $6,000, and there's another version that costs $10,000. Administration doesn't recommend the higher packages at this point. The initial investment, let's see how we can utilize it and improve communication and then move from there.
Do you use that for the bottom line?
Yes, sir, I've got experience with it personally, but there are several school divisions here in Region 7. Norton City has it with Washington County, lots of colleagues that I've got speak very highly of this, so.
And it's the second stage of the program, right? The one you're talking about, mine?
No, it's the initial. It's the $2,700 version, not the $6,000 version. If we get the initial version, in my opinion, the base version is not, it's not gonna do us a disservice, it'll give us an idea of what we can do. Again, communication, put board policy online, and then if it's something that we want to invest in further, we can, but I think just getting baby steps, getting in the right directions, the first step.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify the stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item that we've got is a boundary proposal. The first thing that you should have in your packet is a copy of school board policy LCJ-07. It's a policy that talks about school choice. I'm not gonna read it to you, but one of the things that it says, and again, LCJ-07, item number one, is the attending of a school that is not in the student's attendance area cannot create a burden upon the school that's chosen. Now, this is a very good policy, but I'm gonna say practically and I'm gonna say administratively, we don't have really defined attendance areas. So, what we are proposing is attendance areas. Now, we do not have a hard and fast presentation for you this evening, so this is a first review of concept. When we come up with a policy and we actually have boundaries, draft documents, we'll provide you more information, but this is just beginning the conversation, that if we take a look at school boundaries, this would be something that goes into effect next school year. I'm not talking next month, I'm talking '17, '18, with the intent of doing basically three things. First of all, we would like to be able to address transportation issues, so that we have students who are attending schools near their home, and we're providing transportation instead of, I'm gonna show you some graphs here in a minute, which I know is gonna be kinda hard to see down there. One light, Dr. Brandon. But you'll be able to see where our students attend schools. It's interesting to look at just the dots. The other piece of that is we'll be able to look at, I'm gonna say, capacity in each building, because we have some buildings where students are coming from all over Lee County, and it's causing some issues for us on the staffing side. The third piece of this is if we can define boundary areas, attendance zones, if you will, then we can do a better job of developing a 10-year facility plan, that if, in these particular attendance zones, we have this particular birth rate this year, so five years from now, we can anticipate this kindergarten enrollment, and it helps us develop a 10-year facility plan based on something other than, I think, we'd be able to know that based on projections, not numbers we create. We got permission from you in May to contract with Weldon Cooper from the University of Virginia to help us look at the demographics in our community and specifically in the attendance zones that we can identify to be able to move forward. The first item that I'm gonna show you here is, I can just cooperate. First, you're gonna see Dryden Elementary, and again, one of the things on this, these particular graphs, is they're somewhat crude, because what we did is we pulled these from Google Docs. I apologize, we had to work a few minutes ago. Beautiful thing about technology. But anyhow, we're working with the county's 911 system. If you've ever seen, we actually have maps of Lee County that show the election zones, the different postal zones, all kinds of different shades and colors, if you've seen some of those maps that come out of 911. We're working with them currently to be able to use their maps and be able to come up with something that identifies specifically, on a particular road, that would be a boundary for a particular school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high. So, that being said, um, yeah. Thank you. Nothing like being built out. So, if you look at Dryden Elementary, you can see, and again, very crude because this is from Google Maps, but you can see Cumberland Gap on the far left, and you can see where our students attend Dryden Elementary, where they actually live. So, again, just a graphic, this is just, again, a conversation piece, that you can see, if we had attendance zones, it helps us with transportation, it helps us with staffing, but it also helps us down the road be able to develop a facility plan of, we have this many students in this area, and in 10 years, we're anticipating this much, and three years, we're anticipating this many, and in five years, we're anticipating. So, here's Elknaugh, and you can see, a bit more spread out. And you notice some overlap with the Dryden attendance area? I don't have them to where I can overlay them at this point, but again, once we get some more information from E911 County, we'll be able to provide you some more information with more interactive maps. Elydale. And try to make these maps as comparable as possible, so again, it's not a perfect science, but it gives you the idea. Flatwoods. Students all the way from Dryden is going to Flatwoods, I mean, so it just, interesting information.
It's like the wise county to fail county to take.
This is Rose Hill. And this is current data, this is not old data, this is information we pulled, well, we pulled earlier this week. And needless to say, each dot is a child. So, St. Charles. Keep in mind, going back to Elknaugh, going back to Dryden, and going to this, you can kinda see that we overlap, and needless to say, transportation-wise, we provide transportation for some of these children to some of those locations. So, that's one of my challenges, Mr. Early referenced to me here tonight, is make a transportation a little more clear, and we wanna make sure we're communicating with parents. Administratively, what we will recommend to the board is that we develop some procedures administratively to allow that if my child goes to Flatwoods and I work in that area, then as long as it doesn't change, what our current policy says, as long as it doesn't change staffing, then we'll allow it. If it would cause us to have to add a teacher by allowing that child to go there, then we would administratively would say no, and it could be appealed to you. We've got a lot of procedures to put in place, but again, we've got 11 months to put things in place. Jonesville Middle. Pennington Middle. Thomas Walker. And lastly, Lee High.
How many total bus routes do we have in Lee County?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six. Now, does that include car routes and everything? Just bus routes, fifty-six. And again, what we're looking at is three things with a boundary proposal. Trying to get at transportation issues, trying to get it stacking, and then also being able to address with the end in mind of facilities. You know, if we've got capacity coming at a school, what do we need? And this, of course, the intent of having this conversation in a July board meeting is so that we can start having preliminary conversations about impact on the upcoming budget, so. That's it as far as review. Any questions? And not looking for a policy, not looking for anything more than discussion.
Nothing to move on to, board comments? Anyone have anything they wanna say or comment?
I always look at Lily. I know, write this down, write this down, we sure don't have any. I, I have a comment, a lot of people I know have gotten wind of this and been somewhat concerned about the zoning, and, and when he first brought it to me, I thought this will be a mess. But, we're all about doing what's best for Lee County schools, putting the money where the money needs to be in your classrooms. There's a lot of money at waste by doing what we've been doing. I don't know if Mr. Early can tell me or not, how many of those bus routes out of those 56 pick up, say, five kids?
Five.
Five or maybe even less or a few more? I've, I've heard that we're picking up sometimes just five, six kids and taking them to schools.
Of course, that'll change.
I'll do what happens is you'll see five, six kids get on, let's say, Lee High, goes from Lee High to Pennington, then the other kid gets on to Pennington.
Right.
Now, what we did in the past, we eliminated some of the routes that Lee High just told them to go straight to Pennington, we load the other buses and they exchange buses there and then, and we can still do some of that, too.
Right, that will save us money. Plus two, we, we are so dedicated to putting the right people, that your principals, your teachers, into these schools, that basically, I think that all of us, we have a goal that all of our schools are gonna be great. So, it shouldn't matter where you send your kid, you know, you should want to be able to send your kid what's closest to your home or send your community. And with, with that being done, I think that a lot of people will be more prone to wanna send their kids, you know, sometimes it's personal reasons, and, and like he said, if you teach somewhere, we don't expect you to take your kid to Thomas Walker if you're teaching at Lee High, you know. We, we will do what we can, but it, it is for the best, you know, zoning. I, I was a, I wanted the fifth grade removed out of these elementary schools and put in the middle schools for the simple fact that we have kids in trailers, in double-wide trailers, and we're hoping that maybe if we do this zoning and, and it works, that we can get those kids out of those double-wide trailers and put everybody in, in a building. So, you know, if you hear people talk about it, you know, a lot, a lot of people, you know, they mention, well, I hear that new superintendent's gonna make you go to school where you live, well, you know, I, but it's, it's gonna be for the best, and a lot of times, if you will just wait things out and try it, you'll see that, that it will be for the best. So, share that with people that you hear that has a lot of, because I've heard nothing but negative on this, and I, until he showed me just how spread out some of those kids was, I was, I was shocked.
Biggest thing, what you got, you got buses passing buses.
Right.
And that shouldn't happen.
And that was shouldn't.
And I'll say administratively, one of my concerns is the fact that I don't know if you live at some, live near, or if you're at any of our schools that serve as, I'm gonna say hubs, I mean, it's amazing to watch buses pull in, students get off, I mean, it's, first time I saw it, I was somewhat shocked. But, you know, it was, it was April and it was a well-oiled machine, and I was thinking, man, I can only imagine what August looks like, so, you know, it cuts down on some of the shuttling that we provide, but there's a variety of benefits to it, but again, I think communication's the key, and again, we're not going to force somebody to go somewhere, there will be procedures in place that will allow for appeals and consideration of individual needs.
Yeah, this isn't intended to be punitive at all, I mean, it's intended to help class size and school enrollment, so we don't have schools that are just way overcrowded, and then we have other schools that people should be going there by, by, for geography of where they live, but they're going to one of these other schools and causing overcrowding there, so. It's, hopefully, it's gonna be a good thing, and it'll all work out. Anybody else have any comments?
I, I do wanna say, since our last meeting, that Jack Root passed away, and he was a longtime teacher at Jonesville High School, he's one of my teachers at Jonesville, and certainly, he survived by his wife, Pat, who was one of my teachers here in this building, probably about right down here where these blue chairs are, right here. You were, you were there, you were a year, you were a year behind me. Anyway, Jack passed away just unexpectedly, and I certainly wanna send our regards out to his wife, Pat, so.
Next, can we have a motion to go into closed session? Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion. It's on 2.2-3711A1, pending the threatened litigation section, 2.2-3711A7.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify the stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Don't object if you say so.